Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Here.
Via remotely, councilmember Grino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney Andrew McGuire is also remote.
Oh, hi Andrew. Maybe not.
I don't know if I see him yet actually.
All right. Item two. Presentation, discussion regarding preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. By Joe Duffy, who does not have more than six slides.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it over to our esteemed town manager to begin the presentation of the first two slides.
Oh, that's how it's gonna work.
Yeah.
They said estimated fifteen minutes.
Ooh, we might have been off on that estimate. No, we'll keep it fifteen minutes. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're here to provide you with an overview of our recommended budget. And before we begin, I do just want to recognize the staff for all the hard work that they put into this. And especially our finance director, Joe Duffy. The process was somewhat different this year and everyone put in a lot of hard work and I think you'll be able to tell that. Um, so. Uh, Joe and I will be working together on the presentation as we go through the slides to kind of explain them as we go through. Uh, but Joe will be doing the heavy lifting tonight. Um, so if we, is the presentation? We'll wait to get the presentation up for you.
It's up.
Right here.
There we go. All right. So to start, uh, what we did was we put together the priorities and goals that we heard from council during our budget retreat we had. Um, last month. Um, so you're going to actually see these um, as priorities as we move through the budget slides and we'll try to identify those for you. Um, I do want to say that all of your priorities aren't necessarily addressed through funding, but also through some of our work processes that we will implement. And I'll try to explain that as we go through as well. So the first one you see here is to increase our planning efforts. We talked about that. Um, we need to get uh, the general plan done and also master plans and those are part of our budget. Um, a big focus that we heard was on our infrastructure needs. Um, we have a lot of needs in the different areas, roads, there are reconstruction needs and a lot of maintenance work that needs to go on. Also in our water and sewer system, uh, we need to expand that system. And also our treatment plant. As our town continues to grow, um, we'll need to not only have upgrades to the plant, but also plan for expansion as necessary. We also heard um, the need to improve our service response times and um, our customer service focus. And we really have already started on this one. Um, we are actually kicking off, had our first training sessions. We're gonna put a lot of focus on improving our customer service. I think our staff already does a really great job, but we can always take it to the next level and make sure we're meeting the needs of our customers. So not only are we gonna have some training and involve all of the staff in that, but we're gonna continue that throughout the year to bring up our service levels. So also in improving our response times, we're gonna be evaluating our processes and make sure we set expectations correctly for our staff and communicate those correctly. Um, also updating code enforcement strategies was um, a big topic of conversations. So we're going to make sure we're providing the right education, not just for our staff, make sure they're trained properly, but also provide education in the public to make sure they understand um, what the rules are and what we need to enforce. And we're gonna provide consistency in that area and all of that really to improve our public image in Chino Valley. And um, lastly, um, to continue quality of life efforts in the community. We talked about the needs and making sure that we have special events for our community. Um, we talked about our fifty-year anniversary, moving ahead with that and our Fourth of July celebrations. So those are part of our budget that we're presenting tonight. Improving the dog park was a topic of conversation as well. We've already actually gotten started on that, but you'll see um, there is a budget supplemental to keep moving forward there. And then to also focus on recreation, recreational tourism and entertainment, not only for those who are in our, live in our community, but also to bring people to our community as well. So those are some of the big priorities that we heard from council overall. And we will be um, focusing our efforts in those areas. Um, and getting your feedback and if we um, hit the mark there on that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joe to go over our budget process and our recommended budget.
The last twenty slides. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things when Cindy started, we talked about the budget structure, what we were doing and how we did structure the budget. And she's had a lot of experience in a, in a larger community that has a different structure. And so once she explained it to me, it's like I knew we were gonna take that step someday, but it's like, you know, let's go ahead and get that done now. So we were gonna just do a couple parts, but I think we pretty much accomplished everything that we wanted to. It's really changing the format to set the foundation for the community to grow from this point forward. And you're gonna see Chino Valley took a nice big step forward. Our revenues have increased, we're doing a lot more projects. We have taken a big step up. And generally, what I've always seen in my career is you stay at that high level for quite a while. You'll base there for three, five, eight years, then you're gonna take another step. So we just took a step and with her guidance, um, I think it's a very positive thing. And it, for me, it was a, it was a good exercise to go through the process. But the end result is I think we have a budget that's formatted in such a way that'll be easier for us as management and you as council to, to see the projects as we're doing them and to evaluate how well staff progresses on getting, reaching the goals and the product and completing the things in the budget. So it's, it's been a plus, plus, plus. It's been a lot of work, but it's been, it's been a real, it's been a fun process. It's been refreshing to do it. So one of the biggest things, and we talked about this at our little budget retreat, was a structurally balanced budget. And the concept there is really the budget is structurally balanced where reoccurring revenues equal or exceed reoccurring expenses. So you never have your ongoing expenses never exceed your revenues essentially. So we've balanced all of our funds structurally and we have a graph that we're gonna show you the general fund. But we do the same tests for all of our budgets, just to make sure that we're not spending more than we're bringing in. So this is our current structure and you've seen this many times. These are our four primary funds. We have the general fund, HERF, water and sewer. And the general fund had its capital improvement fund, or we call it capital improvement plan, right? So, but this is the one, basically we're taking one percent of our sales tax and moving it down here. And this is what we've always been doing our capital projects with. But we've also been doing road capital projects, water and sewer, but we kept them in these funds. So the main change we did is we added the capital improvement pro- program for each of those funds. So now essentially we'll, we'll take money from HERF and move it down here to do the road projects. And these pretty much become operating expenses, ongoing, you know, your personnel, your travel, your office supplies, things like that all stay up here, but your major capital projects in each of these four funds go down below. So it's really easy to see what those major capital projects are. And we'll get into those. I'll give you, we'll run through maybe the general fund tonight, just so you understand how that works. So in your packet, I included uh, two things. One, the first part, the first few pages are the proposed budget requests. And as you know, a significant amount of the money that the town spends year after year is on the same stuff. It's personnel, it's electricity, it's gas. You know, we, it's just we have general supplies, operating supplies, travel, those things. Those costs pretty much stay consistent year after year. Sometimes they go up a little bit, but they, you know, they're pretty much ongoing. So what we've done is we've asked the departments to give us a request for when one of those expenses increases or they'd like it to increase. Like let's say they want travel to go from a thousand to two thousand, they gotta do a budget request for it. And then also request any one-time items and any personnel changes. So on the sheet I provided you, I, all the yellow items are personnel expenses and that's the net cost for the personnel change in each of the departments. And the blue items are one-time expenses. For example, in management, in IT, uh, we're gonna do a, we're gonna replace the fiber on North Campus. We gotta pull it through the conduit and repair all the conduit. It's a one-time expense, twenty-three thousand dollars. The other expenses are just, we show for the next three years what those will be. So it might be four thousand this year, five thousand the next year and six thousand. So, and then the other part is I put all the capital improvement plans that we just talked about, including the capital asset replacement fund. And that's the fund that whenever we get one-time money, like insurance dividends or sales tax audit proceeds, by the town resolution that we're supposed to put that in there and we use that to buy equipment. This year, we're gonna buy a couple car, a police car, a van and, and a couple other units out of it. So and I'll show you that I have that for you too. So again, each of the departments submitted budget requests uh, for personnel changes, increase on on-time expenses, one-time items and any other new expenditures. And those budget requests, they had to fill out a form, they had to give a justification for why they needed it and, and you know, and then sit down and convince Cindy and I that yes, they did need it. Not all the budget requests were approved. We've only got the ones that we felt were within our budget and that we thought were, were the top priorities for the budget. So. The town's budget is increasing from twenty-four million to forty-one million dollars next year. This is the largest budget we've had since I've been here, since two thousand twelve. I'm sure it's the largest one in the town's history. But our revenues have also increased from twenty-two million to thirty-six million. And revenues being, this is the source of all of our funds and I, we'll go into detail on what those are. So we've seen an increase of about fourteen million dollars. We're projecting an increase of fourteen million dollars. Now, a big chunk of it is our sales tax revenues are up about a million three. Our state shared revenues, which we thought were gonna be down, are up about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Capital improvement funds, we have seven million dollars for the police department. That's, we hope, more than what the police department's gonna be, but we wanted to make sure with construction costs that we did budget enough. But that'll be whatever the actual bids come in, whether it's five and a half, six, whatever. So, but we need, in bu- in the budget, need to put a larger number, just so we have the expenditure limitation. Sales tax and capital improvement funds up another six-hundred-and-nineteen. Uh, we have a million, almost a million five from the American Rescue Plan and that's what's coming in next budget year. We're expecting the same amount to come in between now and June thirty. So we've actually got three million dollars, almost three million dollars in the American Rescue Plan and we'll talk a little more about that. Uh, water enterprise, we've allocated two million dollars for old home manor sales, just in case we have a sale. And uh, sewer enterprise, WIFER reserves and transfers from the sewer fund to four-seventy-nine. And then just a combination of other revenues rounded to about our, almost a fourteen million dollar revenue increase. So that's where we get the funding to increase our budget. Now, here's, this slide is what I really want you guys to be able to take away with. But this is, at the end of June thirty of twenty, this is what we were projecting prior to COVID. So what you have to understand is, you know, back in February, March of, of twenty, we pretty well shut down and hit the brakes because we didn't know what our state shared revenues and we didn't know what sales tax was gonna happen. Well, it ends up, we ended up with seven million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars in our fund balance. So we started this current fiscal year with a million eight more than we were anticipating last budget year. So we're a million eight to the good. So this is our current budget year. We budgeted eleven million dollars in revenue. We received almost ten-six. Expenditures were, we budgeted eleven-five. We only spent ten-eight. So the net effect of that is we're about four million dollars ahead. We're projecting we're gonna be four million dollars ahead of where we thought we were gonna be a year ago at this time. And there's a lot of things that have contributed to that, but it's cutting expenses. We anticipated revenues to be down, but they've been way up. And so everything, it's just the, the cares funding that we received. We've just had a lot of good positives on our revenue side. Next year's budget, this was my original projection, but we're gonna, we're basically spending more than we're projecting to bring in, but we're still gonna be three million dollars ahead of where we thought we were gonna be last year at this time. So we have, we need to spend some of this money and, and reduce our fund balance down because it's almost three times what it needs to be right now. So you, this is what we're gonna be using to do quite a few projects. So does that make sense? So, this is our structurally balanced budget. And I know I showed this graph to you guys before. So the, the orange here is your ongoing revenues. This is our current fiscal year that ends on June thirty and this is your budget that we're, we're proposing this evening. Your one-time revenues, like uh, a portion of construction, sales tax, uh, building permits, things like that fall into this blank. So you never, and then your blue line is your ongoing expenses. So those are the ones, you know, your salaries and your travel and your office supplies and things that just recur year after year after year. You never want your ongoing expenses to exceed your ongoing revenues. The yellow is our fund balance less, well, this is our reserve line. So we, we need, this is what we keep in the bank to, to cover any rainy days, I guess. And this is our fund balance less our reserve. So what we're proposing this year and if, on the previous slide, you saw our expenditures are more than our revenue, is that we're gonna dip into our reserves. But our reserves only need to be this amount and as you can see, we have adequate reserves to do quite a few projects. We're really not even dipping into them very heavy at all. So, and projecting this forward, the next few budget years, the trend continues. We're still gonna be dipping under reserves and you can see it just start to drip down, drip down. And understand, this is still under the same very conservative revenue estimating basis that I've been operating under since I got here in two thousand twelve. That's led us to get to this. So I feel very comfortable in the budget we're proposing and all the projects that we're doing. The town can afford everything that we have. I mean, we do have the financial condition to do that. So, um, some new positions, or basically I think this adds up to about six when all shaken done, I think we're gonna be like a little over seven that we've actually had FTE equivalents. Uh, the police officer, we're going from a part-time to full-time. We've budgeted about half a position, which gave the chief the ability to hire one more officer. If he had two candidates come in, had one open, it's like, ah, I'm gonna pick this guy up because we know we have turnover. And we've been doing that for several years. We've never gone over budget in his personnel. This year, we went ahead and just moved it to a full-time position, but we're gonna still continue that status of just, if he, if he can find the right guy when he need, because you guys know how hard it is to recruit and retain people. Animal control went from part-time to full-time, their specialist. We added a parks maintenance worker, a management analyst and a project manager for Public Works. Two roads maintenance positions and a water wastewater utility technician. Now, we had more, you know, we had, we had more requests for positions, but we thought we would just slowly, you know, each fiscal year evaluate and just slowly add positions where we need to. Uh, we've also had, and Cindy can help me with some of these highlights, uh, we've had just a, these are just sort of the general fund highlights. We're asking for a contract building inspector and that's really to cover like the apartments. We're gonna have the police department. We've got some large commercial development coming in and that's gonna be on an as-needed basis, but we wanted to put some money for that. We found that we lack, we've bought some really nice uh, software packages and you know, our, our, help me out here, our document management system, but we haven't adequately trained our staff how to use it. So we're not getting, we're not taking full advantage of the technology in quite a few areas. So we wanna try to have a little money that we can bring some people in to train us and we want this to be sort of an ongoing thing. You know, to increase our technology level and, and that's gonna save money in the long run when we're fully using our stuff. Uh, some GIS professional services, fiber replacement at North Campus I talked about. And we're gonna start, we're gonna do some landscaping and maintenance here. The maintenance is, we thought it's time to maybe paint and re-carpet and do some work in town hall and maybe even some chairs for council members, just saying.
Building inspector contract, so it's just contract labor that you're hiring in instead of going with another full-time?
Right, yeah. So it's, it's gonna be, we're gonna hire someone to be the building inspector for maybe like the apartment complex.
For just a project?
Just more project specific, yeah. We're gonna do a little bit out front and then refresh this stuff up on this side. And, and, and we're working with the people, the landscape architect that's doing the police department building, so that all the plants will coincide. They'll use the same controllers and all that kinda stuff, so.
How will that be affected with the construction going in process? We do landscaping and then we tear it up?
Well, no, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna stay away from the construction. So it's just freshening up the front area and this area right here.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's not a hundred, it's not a seventy-five, it's twenty thousand of that number.
Yeah.
Right. And if I may, Joe, um, this was something that went to um, our image here in town and also our code enforcement efforts. Um, I think it's important that we set the example with our properties. Um, we're gonna be asking people to properly maintain their properties or to fix them up or to install landscaping when they come in. So I think it's important that the town sets the example. Um, so that's why we put this in the budget as a recommendation.
Uh, pool replastering and new cover. The new cover will allow us to cover the pool during the winter, so it will stay cleaner. And we're also gonna keep the water chemi- chemistry balanced, so we don't get the algae in the growth and have to go through the whole process. Uh, the pool replastering, we had budgeted for this year, but we postponed it because of COVID, yes sir.
I just read the report on the plastering and the pool getting ready and getting it straight. What kind of a cover is that? Is it a rollout canvas? Are you gonna put a hard fiberglass rig down?
It's a rollout canvas.
Okay.
And it's the same company that built the first one off the, the engine or the plans that we had. So it's actually a really heavy-duty one. Ours just wore out.
Yeah.
Uh, playground equipment is what you guys approved in the last budget. It won't be here until after the new year. We have ten thousand for the dog park, which is for uh, basically a covered gazebo primarily and some whatever else we have left. We're thinking it's gonna be about five or six thousand for the gazebo.
Yeah, on that one, I got a lot of feedback from people concerning the, the dogs' paws when it's a hundred degrees or ninety degrees and they're on the rocks, the dogs are dancing, you know, so, yeah. And then the gazebo, that gives everybody a place to set, yeah.
Right.
Good direction.
Um, the Frisbee golf course in that area just west of the um, dog park, gonna put a Frisbee golf course. And that's pretty much for the equipment and design, a little nine-hole cars, a little nine-hole course. Uh, parks maintenance, equipment, uh, that's a turf mower and some various other things. And as you know, we've been trying to upgrade his, their equipment over the last few years, so. Um, street maintenance equipment, the crash trailer and what else do we have in there?
Pressure washers and.
Yeah, and a brush tripper, chipper, and another snowplow.
Another plow, second plow. We used the blade too much last snowstorm. We need to try and use, piles are much better.
We've made some increases to the operating expenses and water and wastewater, primarily wastewater because we've always been cutting them back, cutting them back, holding up, but we're trying to, and they end up going over budget. So we're trying to find that perfect medium for those guys. Uh, the police building, yes sir.
Excuse me. Um, can you go back to the one before? When, I'm just using the dog park for an example. Um, as we go forward with expanding that or doing things with it, are we going back and utilizing the plans that were, that were, you know, the engineering that we've already paid for? For what the dog park was going to look like, the gazebo and things like that, rather than reinventing the wheel or paying for it again?
Yeah, so we're not doing any engineering on any of this.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, we're just gonna put up a gazebo.
Okay.
So they're small projects. But as far as the community park, the one plan that we did, the, you know, the five-year plan, so we're gonna use all those plans to continue to move forward on that.
I'm talking about the, the, the original plan that we had that included the dog park, finished. The gazebo on the hill, which originally was Prescott Newspaper.
Right.
And then on to the west, we still have all those plans that you can refer back to.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, and we won't be doing any more engineering on that stuff.
Okay.
Uh, the golf course, actually the company's designing that, that sells us the equipment, so same.
They'll do all the, some middles for that?
Yeah. Um, the police department building, like I said, we, we moved it to seven million just in case. Uh, the general plan, master plan we talked about, we got some drainage projects and the welcome to Chino Valley sign for a hundred thousand. And these in the general capital, and we've got this, so these, all the money, the, what will pay for that? And if you look on page uh, six, essentially at the very top, we have where the money comes from to fund all the projects that we're proposing in each of the capital improvement plans. And that's the new structure. So you can see, okay, you know, the sales tax revenue, the, the, the police department loan, those type of things are gonna fund all the projects below it. And so that's where this, you know, and right here, we have the transfers out, uh, the roads, water, debt service. And of course, every year, we transfer for the aquatics and police department to support them. North End, correct? I'm looking at you because it's your project.
It's my project?
You know, I, I think that's yet to be decided because depending on what development comes in, um, we may have to move the original sign that's there, so we may have to spend some money on that. And um, there's also talk about improving.
Four North.
Four North where the roundabout is and, and putting in welcome to Chino Valley things there. So it may be a mixture of that. So it could be dual signage. It's gonna depend on what happens with development as it comes in and what we're gonna need to do. But we just wanted to make sure we had some money set aside there that we could um, get that up. Again, it, we haven't designed any of it yet and that'll, that'll come back before you, before we do anything like that. It's just having money available in the budget um, to be able to do those things, but no design has been put forth yet.
So Joe, one more question on this. These are general, it, it says general capital, but we, the police department building is roughly a five and a half million dollar loan, correct? Is what we figured that would be and the rest's coming from our general fund.
Yes, and we can do it that way too. So what I did is I, I, in the budget, I'm saying we're gonna borrow seven million and we're gonna spend seven million.
Okay.
But that decision and the exact amounts is really gonna be up to you guys. It just gives us the ability to borrow up to seven million, but we can use general fund money also.
Okay, so what else up here is loan or just, or is it what we already feel we have to come out of the general fund?
Already.
Okay, so the only thing that is a loan is the police department?
Is the police department.
Okay.
Yeah, and the intent now is, um, well, originally, we thought maybe some of this American Rescue Plan money could be used for it, but it can't. It has to be used for pretty much water or wastewater improvements. So, we're gonna get a lot of money for that, which means we won't have to spend it here, so. But we'll weigh that when we get the bids in and we'll look at the best option that we have to finance it and how much we wanna put down on it. We have the bill, you have ultimate flexibility. Actually, yeah, expect for the price of lumber. So, um, I'll click, the roads, that is on page seven of your book. And the very left-hand column is what we're proposing for the adopted budget. So this is how these capital improvement uh, plans work. Essentially, we started the year at zero because it's brand-new. And we're gonna transfer a million eight forty-seven in from the general fund, a million one from the capital improvement fund. We're gonna transfer nine hundred thousand from HERF. And then we put nine, five hundred thousand for old home manor sales because there's an old home manor project in here that if we have the sales, we can do it. But with that, we're gonna do these, uh, we have the rodeo drive from Old Home Manor. And that's about what it is, but I put the majority of it in this sheet. It's pretty much, we're gonna start in July, so it's this next budget. It's the contract you've already awarded. Road two north, I hope Frank gets a lot of it done between now and June thirty, at least get it started. If not, we carry the money over. We're okay, but um.
We're trying.
Yeah. Road four and a half and North Road, that's a new project. Yeah. Road four and a half and North Road, that's a new project of a million two. East Perkinsville Road, that's the one that we're looking at maybe using Old Home Manor, uh, road sales or land sales for. And then we have two hundred fifty to reconstruct local streets. And then other stuff, which is the roads yard and. Yeah. Road one east from Fletcher Court to Road three south. So, these are the roads that we're proposing to do, and I think you've worked with the roads committee?
Not that road.
Not that one?
Further down, yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I clarify the four and a half north? That's actually Road four and a half north. Road, um, I believe one south and two south are all in that project. So it's, it was what was adopted through the roads committee, so. It's just hard to put on there and got lost in translation a little bit.
Okay.
And then.
Yeah, four and a half north is actually only about half a million, just for that one road.
I wanted to point out.
Right.
Half a million?
I think so. I, I would have, I don't have the numbers in front of me, that, but that's, that one point two is the entire road program for next year that went through the road committee.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I think it's spelled out a little bit better in your packet.
Right.
Yeah. And then I did wanna point out too, reconstructing the local streets, this was something that we really hadn't been part of the budget before. But I thought it was important that we not only look at some of the larger streets, which of course we need to spend some bigger dollars on. But to also show our community that the smaller streets matter too. And so, you know, we wanted to do two of them, um, but, you know, the budget is constricting. But at least get one of them done this year, uh, in this next coming year, so that they can see that we're trying to make progress on that. And we'll continue to, um, have those local streets as budget permits.
Right, and those are some of the cul-de-sacs off Perkinsville or some of the roads. Off of four north over by the El Charro restaurant and things that have seen such snow damage.
Yeah.
Uh, we actually did some of that work last week over on Gilson, just outside of the Appaloosa Meadows neighborhood. Um, training the crews and, and seeing how it works.
Roads and street committee has been aware of that and has been, you know.
Yep.
Including that within their view as well.
Absolutely.
So the neat thing about these capital improvement plans that we're doing is if we don't spend, we transfer the money over and we don't spend it, it just rolls over into the next year. So we'll spend it on different projects. If, if Frank saves money and does all these for a lot less than he projected, we'll have more to do for next year. Or we can do additional worlds during the fiscal year also.
Other hundred thousand, is that the mayor's race?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Clear for that. Just, but, but it, it's a one-time expenditure. So the water fund's, uh, pretty small. Um, we just had some Old Home Manor projects for two, two million that we just put in there. If we have land sales, just give us some budget capacity. Uh, one of the things is a fill station on the east side and similar to the one we have over by Walgreens. They've been talking about that for a few years. Um, or, and then the head start, or the six-inch water main on Perkinsville in eighty-nine, and there's actually a sewer line involved in the sewer for that. And then the head start water main extension.
And so I did wanna touch on that. Like Joe said, you'll see on the roads, on the water and on the sewer, we have this, um, Perkinsville Road eighty-nine to Road one east. Cause we don't wanna go in there and tear up the road and then, um, then come back two years later and put in a water line or put in a sewer line. With, so we built those projects together, so it could, it could be done and we don't have to go back there and spend more money.
Do it once, right?
Joe, on the, uh, the fill station, where's it gonna be located?
Don't know.
Who is it gonna serve?
Well, who's?
Yes.
Frank, you maybe address that better?
No, that's, that's mainly, uh, location somewhat to be determined. Um, we're wondering for a second location if we need to locate it out at Old Home Manor. Just because that's where we only, the only place we really have good resources. Um, but we can, uh, work through the utility committee on maybe brainstorming some good locations for that. Um, problem with Old Home Manor, I think we've discussed this in the committee before, is you might need some storage tank capability for that too. Um, but the need, real need is, uh, when the fill station by Walgreens, you're gonna see development there. So I'm not sure how long that fill station can stay where it is. Plus, when that fill station goes down, we wanna, another one that it may not be as convenient as that one for the folks. Cause most of the folks that need water are on the west side of town. Um, the problem is all of our water infrastructure is on the east side of town. But, uh, but we do want a second fill station to provide that redundancy. Uh, just like looping a water line, we want a second fill station so that the folks that need it for haul water will have, uh, access. If one goes down, they've got the second one to, to use that for.
Who owns the well at Sycamore Vista and two north there, just in?
The town.
The old Reese, the town owns it?
The town. There's two wells there. Yeah, we're the old.
With the old diesel motor there?
Yep.
That's a natural gas.
Oh, excuse me, you're right, it was natural. So why couldn't we fire that up with a storage tank and make that into a fill station?
Uh, we could check with ADWR and provide, I'm not sure if we would need to provide water rights to activate, activate that. If it's not part of our distribution. Right, that's, the, we could look into it. Details would determine if it could work or not.
I mean, there's a well there. There's power there.
There's absolutely a well there. No, I'm not saying I don't want to, I'm saying we ma- I have to make sure we're allowed to.
I'm just, I, I went by there the other day and I thought that'd be a perfect place for a fill station.
And that would also, if development, depending on how development occurs too, it could be a, a better and better option in the future.
Yeah, cause then you activate it, use it, and you can put water lines off of it.
Absolutely. Which is.
Local knowledge.
Which brings us back to master plans, or?
Yeah. Be nice, Frank. Uh, there's sewer plan. We need about a hundred thousand to finish the concrete aprons, fencing and s- some additional equipment they're asking for. Uh, start the EQ basin engineering. Repair the airlines and the repair the airlines, the rotor mat repair and the screw press are all using WIFIA reserve funds that we have in the bank right now. And then the lift station crane is a new piece of equipment. And a twelve-inch sewer main, and that's the other part of the project that Cindy was talking about there. So we'll use, uh, we'll transfer money from the sewer fund, uh, WIFIA reserve, four hundred and forty-two thousand, and then Old Home Manor Sales. Or American Recovery Plan can be used for that.
So all of these, um, sewer projects, um, in here that are recommended from the staff. And I think we're really kinda behind the times in actually getting some of these done. Um, the equipment, um, is probably need to be replaced for a while. And if, if we don't put resources into this, it's gonna cost us a lot more money in the long run. And really puts us in danger of the plant not being able to even serve what it was originally built for. Um, loadings have changed at the plant. A lot of things change over time. And so, just wanted to point out how important that getting these upgrades, if you will, done to that plant before. Otherwise, we would have to plan for expansion, um, even sooner than we have in the plan, so.
And being.
She asked if we had already approved this group. These, weren't these, all these improvements already approved at one point?
This group, is this the, yeah, this is the one that still hasn't shown up, right?
Right. It's the replacing the belt press.
Yes, yeah, so we have. We just haven't got.
Round to it.
The equipment, no, we've ordered it. The equipment has not shown up, so we're dealing with the same thing.
So if it wasn't gonna be spent, if we don't think it's gonna be spent by June thirtieth, we have to re-budget for it.
Yeah, roll it. Yeah, it's, hasn't shown up yet. So the American Rescue Plan, we've, we receive, we are anticipating receiving, and, and as of today, these are the amounts that we're gonna receive. We did get a little bit of a notification, uh, just last week, I believe. Uh, we're thinking we're gonna get about a million five this year and a million five next year. And there's several things that could be used on, but the, the one item that only really works for us is investing in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. Improving access to clean drinking water, supporting vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure and expanding access to broadband internet. Everything else is public health, reimbursing for COVID-nineteen expenses, aids to communities hardest hit, which we weren't. Um, providing premium paid, uh, essential workers who, you know, like healthcare workers and things like that, which none of those categories really apply to Chino Valley. So, this will be, I mean, we've budgeted to receive the revenue, we've budgeted to spend the revenue next year. So this is where we're gonna have to spend some time talking about, you know, do we accelerate the wastewater treatment plant? Expansion, the equalization basis. We got a lot of choices. Do we run a sewer line or, or a water line somewhere? But it's, you know, it's more than we wanna talk about before we adopt the budget, but I think we're gonna have a few study sessions to come up with a plan on how we wanna spend this money. And I'd like to do it as, as soon as we receive that first million four, then we should get together and talk about it. You know, so we're waiting for also some more guidance. Uh, I'm sure the league will put out some more clarification on it. And I don't know what they're gonna ask for backup, and there's just a, it's sort of unknown, but it's looking pretty positive that we're gonna receive these funds.
Just remember, it takes time to design things.
Yes. I remember that.
Tom, you got any input?
No, I think this is great. Somebody's put a lot of work into this and I think it'd probably come to fruition on all these items as we go along.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So it's really, um, I guess, we'll turn over to you guys, you, you have a lot of detail in, in, in your packet? Is there anything that, anything we forgot?
The one thing that I, I, I see come up here a couple of times, and that's Old Home Manor money from property sales. You know, that. That, that's hard to, to really count that.
Right, um, so, and that hasn't all even been approved yet, but if you don't put the money in the budget. Um, then even if you decide to do it, we can't do it. So it's just really a placeholder at this time. We, we budgeted the same amount of revenue and the same amount of expenditure. If, if it doesn't come to fruition, then we wouldn't be spending those dollars.
Well, yeah, we really never received the dollars, so we won't spend them. But let's say we do.
But it, it kinda looks like it's earmarked that if it does, that's, it would be used to do. I'd have to go back and look.
No, council would have, so.
So we need, i- if we expect what you're saying it could be used for, we're gonna have to come up with that money for somewhere else.
If we wanna do those projects, but we're not, yeah, but that's completely up to council's discretion, what those funds can be used for. The general idea was to improve, you know, if you sell twenty acres, to put it, help improve the industrial park or something out of Old Home Manor. But that's really your discretion also. And it won't be spent until it comes before you.
The American Improvement Plan, is that what you call it?
American.
American Rescue.
Rescue Plan.
Rescue Plan?
Yeah.
What, is that a COVID thing or?
It's, it's the Democratic, um.
More free money.
It's the Democratic CARES Act. CARES Act is the Republican Party, the Democrats put out the American Rescue Plan. It's the same thing.
Supposed to hit before the end of the fiscal year?
We're supposed to get half of it before June thirty.
Wow, wow, cool.
So.
Looks like you're getting a raise after all.
Yeah?
Yeah. So.
Five hundred dollars and twenty-five cents.
We spent the CARES Act pretty much on two north and the, the road projects that we did.
Now, were, were the stipulations not?
I'm sorry, man, we're not through.
Bye, Laura.
Were, were those same stipulations have changed?
They have changed, yes.
That's why.
The CARES Act funding, we're able to basically use it to pay for our police department, the officers for, until we use the funding up. Which freed up money in the general fund, and then we transferred that over to the HERF fund to do the road projects. But with this, the only thing in the criteria that we've received so far, and I'm saying so far, cause it could change. Uh, the only thing that's applicable is water and sewer infrastructure for us. And how that shakes out and what that can be used, I can't tell you exactly at this time. I just know it's water and sewer infrastructure.
And we're not using any general fund money into water and sewer anyways. It's not like you can do a.
Right.
A swap out.
That's correct. Yes, sir. That is perfectly correct.
But I would note that when you put water and sewer lines in the ground, you have to patch it back somehow.
He wants road money too.
Right.
And that will all come out in the planning process when we're sure that we're gonna get the funding.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll have a study session to decide, to talk about that when we have the criteria. The league usually puts out something in real detail to us. Of course, Andrew will take a look at it too, so make sure we use it correctly.
With, with much love to the pickleball users at home. Two hundred thousand dollars?
Not in this year's budget. It'll be in next year's budget. So this year, we are gonna paint another court and buy another net, correct? That's my understanding.
Yes.
Yes. And so, we probably should, should start thinking about the design and where that's gonna be located and all that this year, so we'll have the money for next year.
Next year.
Yes.
There was something else that jumped out at me. Oh.
I haven't heard about the, the, uh, playground equipment down at the community center. We are replacing that because we have to or replacing that because we decided we want to?
Mayor, council member, that is something that actually came up in an audit, that, um, the equipment was unsafe, so we're required to replace that right now or take it down.
Didn't we go through that at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have one here.
Right. It's in the packet for last meeting.
Well, I figured that's what it was. I just wanted to verify.
Yes, right.
So one thing I, um, on page ten of your packet is our capital asset replaced with, and I said I'd talk to you about that. We have in the police department budget, we've budgeted for one patrol car and one, uh, evidence van, is that correct? We're gonna go ahead and order, we're gonna try to order the plu- two police cars as soon as we can to get them in the queue. And then if, if they're, if council doesn't approve it, then we'll just back out on the orders. It won't cost us anything to do it. So they're, they're putting the specs together. The van and in the capital replacement fund, we have another patrol car and, uh, another admin car for the police. But we're gonna hold off on the van and the admin car until after the police departments. We know what that number is. So, um, we also have, um, a hundred and forty-one of capital replacements. So that's gonna be a new building department escape, uh, recreation F-one-fifty. We're looking at just a two-wheel drive, long bed, F-one-fifty. So they can move tables back and forth and do that stuff for the recreation staff. And then a patrol car and an admin vehicle. And the fund balance, we started the year with three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. We're gonna end up, we're estimating three hundred and three. Although we did just receive a seventy-five thousand dollar, thereabouts refund check from our insurance. So we're gonna end up the year with three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So more than I had already, I didn't know the number was coming when I did the budget. So we're all, so we'll end up the year, if we purchase everything here with about, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand left for it. And that's what this fund was established to do, is to buy basically equipment.
Say that again as far as the, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm very sorry, go ahead.
The police cars, we're holding, we're holding off on getting a couple, depending on whether the structure goes through?
No, 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 that, the, um, so we're gonna go ahead and try to order the two patrol cars as soon as possible, because they're nine months out.
Production's way behind.
Or maybe longer. I mean, so, but we're not gonna order the other two until, we just wanna, you know, see what the police department building looks like and what that figure comes out to. So they're just gonna hold off until we see how much the police.
Depending on what the police department building costs, with the numbers coming in final numbers. Okay.
I don't know.
Cause I guess, I don't know what that has to do with the, with the cars at all.
We're just telling them to hold back until we get, well, and it's also outfitting the police department, getting all the equipment. If we need extra money for that, we'd rather use that money for that instead of vehicles.
When are we having the final numbers?
We're hoping, we're at eighty percent plans, right, Frank? And so we talked about that in leadership and haven't gotten that answer yet, when we'll see the hundred percent plans. It should be really quick, the next few weeks. Frank, yeah, Frank's gonna have to review them, so we could be out to bid as soon as July?
I think so.
Yeah. Their schedule had it a little more aggressive than that, but I can, I just won't see.
Takes a while to bid things though, so.
What's the guarantee on the price though? What's the guarantee on the price though?
When we open the bids.
You mean on the, on the estimate?
Yeah.
I don't think the architect guaranteed a, a cost.
I don't think they can at this point, I mean, the way things are rising, that's kinda scary.
Yeah, I mean, but, but they'll give us their, their best guess, and hopefully they're right in the middle of the, that's what we shoot for with engineering estimates is you try and shoot for the middle of the pack, you, so that your budget is, is fairly accurate, so.
Right, but even if you shoot for the middle, so we got five point five million, but we have seven budgeted.
Just in case.
Yeah, and but...
We might use all seven.
But as you just noted, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, as you just noted, costs are volatile, so it's, it's a real guessing game these days.
Wood construction, the wood, a sheet of plywood that used to be about forty, a four-by-eight sheet, is now almost ninety bucks. So wood's going off the page because of every, this COVID lockdowns, et cetera.
Yeah.
Lon, you got anything?
Well, so when you, when we do the bid, this contractor bids it, is it, is that solid then at that point in time? He's responsible, or because of the, the situation that we're in right now? Pardon?
I don't think he can be responsible.
Sure, that's what I'm saying, is they're gonna...
Yes. How can he be responsible? I mean, if the cost is volatile, like you said.
Well, the, the way the public bidding process works, I'm saying that the architect is his prices are a best guess. He'll give us his, his opinion of probable cost. But what will happen in the bidding process is you generally have four weeks, give or take, for an advertising period for the contractors to submit their hard bids and provide, uh, you know, that's when you have so many days to build the building. So this is a hard bid that the town is doing, so the prices they come in, they have to guarantee those prices.
Okay.
Um, unless there's some sort of unseen condition, like find something, utility underground or something, then you come through with a change order and they have to justify it, but this isn't, um, like an open book, design builder, construction manager at risk. This is a regular, good old-fashioned, give us your best price. Town takes the lowest bid as long as it's a responsive bid. Um, and then council decides if they wanna award, spend that amount of money and award the project to that contractor.
Good.
Four weeks, you can look at twenty percent increase in materials.
Yeah.
So they're gonna build it, they're gonna have to overbid it to cover my bids that I'm putting out. I'm putting on the note on it that, you know, lumber will be re-bid and readjusted at time of build. Cause it's taken so long to get stuff.
It's, in the, in the asphalt world, sometimes on ADOT jobs especially, you, you will sometimes see, uh, oil and things tied to certain indexes in the bid, but, uh, I don't, I would have to defer to the architect to see if he's got any sort of flex like that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Cause you're obviously fuel escalators, you know, cause that's something that nobody really has control of, or lumber and stuff, they can lock in on a package. Fuel is one that is just beyond everybody.
And lumber right now is really, like Jack says, off the page and volatility.
Anything on the budget, Lon?
Um, no, you know, my only, uh, you know, I still have my concerns over, over the, uh, the loan, but we'll get to that when it comes up. Um, the only other thing is, as, as we're explaining, revenues have been better than we figured, and things seem to be going good. Myself, I'm a little bit of a what can go wrong type person when I look at stuff like that. And, uh, and so, I'm going, okay, yeah, it's been a bang-up year. You know, construction's been crazy and, and things are going gangbusters, but I haven't forgot about two thousand eight yet. And, uh, what if?
And I agree, and, but we also have the option of not doing this stuff, if that happens.
Yeah, we can put the brakes on, but Lon, understand, I'm in your court a hundred percent, and that's why we're just slowly stepping up our game and not, not just going full bore, because we can go a lot more into that yellow and spend that money and we'd be okay. But we're still just barely getting into our reserves, you know, and getting projects done. And, and the reality is, this is probably all we can do with the, the resources that we have. We almost can't do anymore than this. And we're still gonna get a lot of things done this year, you know, a lot more than we have in the past, so. But I totally hear you, and I think when the COVID scare came, that showed you how fast we could pull back. You know, put the brakes on everything and, and we have that option any day to do that.
Quick.
And just be aware, currently, interest rates are at about the lowest they've been in a long time, and they may, you know, you know, who knows, if I can read the crystal ball, but they may be ready to take off up. That's...
Eric, you got anything, but?
I'm in the same boat as Cory. I, I kind of don't like the idea of the Old Home Manor being budgeted in here, as far as sales, because we don't have appraisal on it yet.
Yeah, well, it's, it's more of a placeholder.
Right. But I mean, do we even have to put it in here?
Well, if we anticipate a transaction of any sort next budget year, we do.
If you wanna spend the money is what he's saying. You can't spend it if it ain't in there.
And we don't.
And if it doesn't sell, then you don't do whatever project it's tied to.
Yeah.
But if we do sell, then we can put it in a separate budget.
We could budget it the next year also. But typically, when you budget for placeholders, you put in an equal revenue and equal expense, and it just gives you the maximum flexibility. But doesn't obligate you to spend. You're not spending anything until you have the resources to spend it, so it's really just a placeholder. It's government budgeting.
Kind of the proper prior planning. If you don't have it planned, you can't do it. And then all of a sudden, if you didn't plan for it, you can't do it till the following year when potentially interests. But we on the council have the ultimate final decision at point of execution, if I'm understanding this correctly.
Yeah, and if we had a land sale out there this next fiscal year, there's nothing that says we have to spend the money at all. But you got, the council would determine what project we want to allocate that money toward. And it, reality, it probably won't be spent till the next budget year anyway, but just in case, oh, let's get this road done or right away, like you've had with a couple, we can get it done. So it just gives you guys, we're, we're building in the flexibility, so we can, you guys make a decision, we can go.
Any council have anything else? Staff, you guys have anything?
So Mr. Mayor, the next meeting, we'll have the tentative budget, which will be the formal state budget forms prepared, and I'll have those in your packet for you.
Okay.
With the total amount.
If that's all, we're gonna stand adjourned. Done. Thank you.
Ching, ching.
I'm gonna stand to leave.
Nice job.
Are you gonna stay here?
I might.